It is 6:02 and I am calling this meeting to order the planning zoning commission. Today is January the 6th of 2022. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir.
Present.
Okay, on the line.
Present.
Hi, Baron. Uh, he requested to be excused. Uh, Abraham Nungo also requested to be excused, Johnny M. Herran.
He was gonna draw them. He's gonna be coming in a little bit, maybe 15, 20 minutes.
Uh, oh, you... Can you pronounce your name for me?
Let her do it.
Yixian Huang.
I'm sorry, say again?
Yixian Huang.
Yixian Huang, okay, Yixian Huang.
Present.
Uh, Larry Dovalina?
Here.
Daniela Sada paz?
Here.
Ana G. Villarreal. And I don't have any notations for her. I should add that.
So for the record?
For the record, you do have form.
Thank you.
I move to excuse the two persons that are absent.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, sign it up by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item, can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its representative republic. For which stands the nation, our God, indivisible, infinite, endless. Next item we have is the consideration of the approval of the minutes of December 16th, 2021.
So, move.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries, thank you. Do we have anybody signed up for citizens' comments right now?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, item number six, review and consideration of the following master plan. Six A, review and consideration of the Santa Barbara master plan, the intended residential and commercial. All right?
Mr. Chairman, before we even begin with the first item, I just want to introduce Laura Garza. Uh, we call her Roxy, she is a new planner too, she just started yesterday. And so she's here and she's here to help us. Her background is architecture and building construction. And she'll be on board to help us with zone cases, plots, historical, all the different areas.
Welcome.
Hello, welcome, nice to be here.
All right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Rick?
Yes. Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is TXIE Development, um, engineer is Guerra Engineering. Proposed use is residential and commercial. The zoning for this 1,461 lot development approximately is B4, R1A, and R1. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. From water and utilities. Traffic safety. Webb County and the Webb County Utilities Department. And the proposed motion.
Okay.
Before we open the, uh, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a comment before we start with the discussion, Mr. Guerra, you can please. The, uh, of all the, uh, the items that we show on the, uh, on the subject to approval, I noticed that, uh, there's some items that, uh, that makes it almost impossible for us to review this master plan, Mr. Chairman. One of them being is that there's different owners that are, that we don't see any, uh, any approval, but those owners were representation, so us even looking at, uh, at that master plan and not knowing who the, if the owners are approving to this master plan, then that will create us doing a decision on something that we don't know who owns it. Secondly, uh, I don't see approval by the, uh, by the Utilities Department of Webb County. And that is crucial because the only way we can approve a master plan is that we have an approval from the, uh, from the Planning Advisory Board and, uh, and approval by the Utility Department of the Webb County, sure. So actually, this, uh, this plan before us, this master plan, it shouldn't even be before us. This is incomplete. Whatever we discuss here is, is not gonna, is not gonna have any, uh, any weight on it. And now, uh, let me just finish real quick. And, uh, because I see that, that you don't have that letter of approval from the Utilities Department, so we're only assuming, we're only assuming that those permissions and approvals will come. We don't know because you actually don't have an approval, see? We don't know the capacity of the util, of the plant. If we has enough capacity for the whole master plan and the first phase that you plan to develop. Much less if we know if, if it's enough or sufficient for the, uh, for the, uh, for the residents and, uh, and the community members that are residing there. So, Mr. Chairman, you want to spend some time here? I'm happy, but there's nothing there that can actually allow that master plan to be before us. What I have commented, that's exactly what it is, and I'm, unless Mr. Guerra can produce.
All right, Mr. Guerra.
Chairman, agree with me, that is the commission.
Just a minute.
Fred, Fred Guerra, Guerra General.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we, we, we're, uh, we're, we're gonna go through the one-stop shop, that's where you get the approvals from the different departments.
From Webb County?
Also, yes, correct.
You can't, I mean, you have, before we know, before we, before you can go to the one-stop shop, see, that's City of Laredo. You have to, for this master plan to proceed, you need to have the approval first from the Utility Department and the Planning Advisory Board of the county. Go ahead.
We did, uh, approach, uh, I think Mr. Sanchez on it. We have a verbal and we have a study of the capacity of the water plant. And that does, uh, have the capacity for Phase 1. And also the sewer plant has the capacity for Phase 1. But I do agree with you that we do have to bring it in writing. But we do have, we have already talked to him and we have, already an engineer has done the studies of, uh, of the capacities of both plants, the water and the sewer.
Okay, let me ask you guys this. Y'all haven't discussed that with the Planning Department because apparently they were not aware of that. Because I'm, based on the comment that I'm seeing. So that's my question to, to Fred, I guess. You haven't shared that information with the Planning Department?
No, 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 not, we haven't.
Okay. And, and you see, those are the kind of things, that's why the, the comments that were made, was obviously the relevant comments, but it appears that you've done more work that they're not aware of. And so, I guess this is where everybody's having a difficult time figuring out.
So that, that goes with, with the, uh, with the, uh, submittal of the, the master plan, the, the approval of the utilities?
Well, one of the things is, is, and I think everybody has this concern, obviously, uh, the capacity of the plant that you were, I will, for water and sewer is only so much. And apparently you guys, you just said it.
Yes.
It's only enough to do Phase 1. So that would indicate to me that this whole master plan, because master plan is probably well over 1,500 connections, would require an upgrade to both of the systems. And of course, as you know, upgrades, I don't think the, if the county follows what the city does, it really goes back on the developer for those upgrades. I don't know if you've explored, I mean, you've explored Phase 1 and, and, and I heard that, I think we all heard that. The rest of the master plan though is, it's got a lot of, I guess, questions, like Commissioner Dominguez said. It would seem that it might be, be true of everyone just to look at Phase 1 as a master plan. And not do the whole thing, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, in order to look at Phase 1, we need to approve a master plan, otherwise we cannot approve.
Well, what I'm saying is only approve of Phase 1 as a master plan.
But.
But again.
Don't you have to resubmit because it's presented improperly in the agenda?
At this point, yeah, they, you gave us a whole shebang.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what the county department requires, with the entire, the entire tract.
Well, the, the, the track, that, for, Mr. Guerra, what we have, what is before us is not complete. I mean, actually, even if, uh, in, in, not to disagree with, uh, with Chairman Adam, but you, the owners are not there, given the permission, at least we don't have a letter or, or the title that covers that particular item, uh, item or area. Secondly, uh, you verbally talk to the people from, from, uh, from Webb County, but you don't have anything in writing, see? So how come are we even looking at this when this is not complete, uh, Mr. Navarro? This shouldn't even be before us. This has to be clean before it comes before us. So that's, that's the way I see it, Mr. Chairman. Why are we even looking at this if we know and they know and everybody knows that this is not complete?
They comply.
What do you do, what do you do, Kevin?
They comply only with the master plan incomplete, but not with all the little, the rest, right?
Well, not, not even that, Commissioner.
Not even?
Not even that, because, uh, the master plan, I looked at it and, uh, and the way it's gonna, it's gonna move in between the phases, see? It's, uh, it's not correctly, I'm not an engineer, but it's obvious that even takes out, it's, uh, is limiting them on that particular item. So I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, that we deny it or send it back, or you can table it, uh, Mr. Guerra, and, uh, and try to clean it out and bring it out more completely so, or we can, we can actually approve it with something in writing. But the way it is, I mean, we're assuming everything and we're not here to assume, but actually, we're here to provide for the community. So anything that we approved here, it impacts the community and impacts who is not in the community but actually pay taxes. Because at the end, whoever's gonna be providing services, City of Laredo. And someone that is living in Del Mar is gonna be liable for, 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 for paying for those particular services. So that's unfair.
Can I say, uh?
Yes, sir.
Just to get a little bit more educated here. What we did is, we went and approached Mr. Sanchez on what we wanted to do and.
For the record, who is Mr. Sanchez?
Uh, he is the director for Webb County, uh, Water and Sewer.
Okay.
And, uh, we approached him and, uh, at one time we said, I told the, the engineer, you know, we don't know we're gonna do the whole project, you know, we might just do half of the project, but then they told us, no, you have to present, the owner, uh, is, is the same owner for the whole property there, okay? So, uh, they recommend, uh, it was recommended that we present the, the whole property, which I was not in agreement, but we were told that.
Let me stop you right there, who recommended that? Did you present the whole, the whole property?
Who was the recommendation?
Planning Department.
The Planning Department?
Can't just submit, just they want, they want the.
The city planning department?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the standard.
So I told Fred, you know, I don't even know that if he's gonna build the whole thing, just part of it. But anyway, uh, they, uh, it, we were told that we, we go in phases, that that plant could support, you know, that Phase 1, but then if we wanted to build some more, that we had to pay for the improvements of the sewer plant and the water plant, you know, that, uh, if we wanted to go a little bit further, but at this point, that they could support, you know, that Phase 1. So we said, okay, uh, if we plan to build some more, then we'll come to you and we'll tell you, we're gonna build another, let's say, 50 lots. And they would tell us, okay, if you want to build 50 more lots, then you have, you as a developer has to upgrade our water plant and you have to upgrade the sewer plant. And, uh, we talked to our client and he said, that's fine, you know, we, when we get to that point, we'll go ahead and, and present it to the county and they'll tell us how much money they need. So, and they will make the numbers and if we want to continue developing or we'll stop right there. And I guess, like I said, you know, I'm getting ed- education here and that was our, our, we were thinking at that time. But you're right, you know, we have to bring in, you know, all the facts, not only talk.
So what do you, what do you want to do, Mr. Guerra, do you want to table it or do you want to?
I would say that table it so we can, I mean, with more information that, that you all need.
I think what you need to do is table it, look at what you presented, that whole master plan itself is a huge development. And based on what you're telling me right now, that Mr. Sanchez already said to you, the capacity of what they have in infrastructure is limited. So you may want to take a look at your master plan and the size of it, is my opinion. But certainly we have, do we have a motion to table it and then come back with?
You're agreed to table?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table the item.
Bring more information.
And bring more information and, and take a look at that whole big master plan, I mean, you may want to look at it differently if, if capacities may not be there.
Show Phase 1.
If the capacity may not be there for the whole master plan as you're sort of alluding to to us. You're telling us right now that it's gonna be a cost to the developer to upgrade water and sewer. And that's a number that you're gonna have to take a look at because that could be a very sizable number based on that whole master plan.
Can we, can we, uh, present only what the client wants to build right now and not the whole master plan? Can we speak, because we don't know.
You might want to look and talk to the Planning Department, see if they.
You all have to get together.
Or change your master plan, change your master plan.
I'm just gonna make a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. What you need to, I think, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you how to do your job, but the first thing you need to do is get a letter from Webb County Utilities and, uh, and from Planning Advisory Board that you have a blessing to start doing that, that's the first thing you need to do. Was that a public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
But right now, it's, it's a review and consideration of this master plan.
I see, well, then I'll make a motion to table the items per presenter.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a second, all those in favor of tabling the item?
Aye.
All those against? All right, motion carries. So then, uh, I take it that you would want to also table the next item, which is a preliminary consideration of the plan of Santa Barbara?
That's great. I'll make a motion to table that.
You have a motion, we have a second, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, uh, who's here, Mr. Baron, Mr. Navariz arrived from me at 6:10. And Villarreal at 6:13.
6:13? Johnny beat you and he was 100 miles out. Okay.
And we just said the time because we have somebody who takes the notes and she needs to hear that.
Of course. All right, next item we have is preliminary consideration of the replat of lots 3, 4, 5, Block 1. Manadas Development Phase 1, it's a lot 3A, Block 1, Manadas Development Phase 1, intended as commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is PG Indigo LLC, engineer is Gomez Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, the zoning for this one lot development is B3. Location view. Area view. Street view. The plot and the replat. Comments from planning. Traffic. And the proposed motion.
All right, yes, sir?
Uh, good evening and happy new year to everybody.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Uh, we concur with, um, all of the comments, I just want to make, uh, clarify one, one, uh, comment number, number two, which is the, uh, the access to a lot, uh, direct access to McPherson Avenue. And I just want to make sure that on this plot, we, we may, we're keeping the same share access. So we want to leave the, um, the, uh, the opportunity to continue to use that, that share access.
Shared access?
Yes.
Okay, what comment, this comment number two under who? Under the Planning Department?
Yes.
Plot note that prohibits, provide plot note that prohibits direct access from McPherson Avenue to Lot 3A.
Oh, see.
It's already there, right?
You're gonna use.
So why is the comment there?
Just to try to keep traffic from coming off, to keep it on the code, the code sack? But we're okay to maintain it as a shared drive.
Okay.
Can we put the overhead view again?
So, uh, let's try to get our bearings. So down at the bottom, that would be, uh, I just forgot the name.
It's, um.
Seafood.
La Laguna.
The same share access, uh, from, to the, uh, to the Laguna and to this property.
Where you enter La Laguna, you're gonna enter to your property.
Okay. Now, the question, I guess, that also, there was a comment there about the FEMA map, you've looked at that? Because if I remember correctly, this is the Marshall Track.
Yeah, it is.
And, and the Marshall Track, they rechanneled the creek, you remember that, right?
Yeah. About the lake.
So in that rechannelling of the creek, where does the creek show up here?
The creek is behind the, uh, the Laguna.
On the side or what?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where it is because I know we, we channeled it to the very edge of the property, way back.
And the overhead, ahí.
Yeah, there it is.
Aquí está.
That's why the tree line.
I see it. Okay. Okay.
No.
No más aquí.
No.
Okay, it's still there.
Is he gonna use the access to McPherson from the existing access?
Yes. But you're not gonna have any through the Marshall Street?
Yes.
The Marshall Street's already there, so there's two entrances to this property.
Oh, okay.
And what planning is saying that they wanted to just limit that access.
The comment was to limit the access, but that is a shared access that they had already predetermined.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, so the property itself won't have an additional access on the front?
Not on McPherson.
Okay. Cause that street is bad.
Then you have the other one over here by Pollo Palente and then the other one by, by the Dollar General, come in.
Yeah.
So you want access from McPherson, Mr. Gomez?
No, 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 we'll, we'll use this in the existing, uh, driveway.
Okay, the, the existing one that's there right there at the bottom?
Right. All right, anybody else have any questions for the engineer? If not, what are the wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion? Those against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is the, uh, preliminary consideration of the plat of Laredo Logistics Center and granting of a variance to allow a dead-end street to exceed 500-foot threshold pursuant to Section 321 of the subdivision ordinance, intended as industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Laredo Logistics Center LLC, engineer is Gomez Engineering. Proposed use is industrial and the zoning for this one lot development is M1. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plot. Comments from planning. Water and utilities. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Okay? Yes, sir?
I'm Daniel Gomez, the engineer of record for this project. And we agree with, uh, most of the comments, uh, just, except the, uh, the ones on, on the water utilities about the, uh, the master plan. This is a, a one-lot, um, uh, property and behind the, uh, on the north side of the property and west side, on the west side, it's owned by the same, uh, property owner. So we're not landlocking anybody. That's the only, uh, concern that, that we have.
Just a, just a side note, um, we reviewed this plat with, um, Tech Stop. And so Tech Stop's proposing to bring in another traffic light to the, to the north?
Another traffic light?
Vidalcan 2. They were proposing to put a traffic light there, they couldn't justify it. Now with this project, they, they feel the numbers are there, they're gonna need a traffic impact analysis. But eventually you'll get a traffic light here, traffic light here for the controlled exit of the, of the 18 meters. So that can be discussed with Tech Stop.
We're already working with, um, we're, we're talking with another transportation engineer to help us do the, uh, to do the, uh.
The TI? Okay, let me ask you on your, uh, variance that you're asking for on the 500-foot threshold, how much further than 500 feet are you going?
It's about 740.
About 700?
It's, yeah. We have to extend it a little bit, um, more, yeah, because there's, um, a drain, a drainage system and we put in a, a concrete, uh, cover in order to construct the code sack, we needed to be aware.
It didn't move?
That's why.
Okay. Makes sense. Anybody have any questions on the commission for, Mr. Gomez? So you're still okay with the, you'd like to remove the master plan comment for the water and sewer?
Yes.
And is that something that, I guess the city is?
They put it in there, but it's just a, a one-lot.
What, what number is the, the comment?
I believe the, the comment, what he was talking about is true.
Who?
True.
Number 2.
He's not landlocking anybody.
Water Utilities, number 2.
Yeah, yeah, Louis.
He's good with it. You're good with everything.
Well, let me ask you this, they're, they're saying that you, there is already a master plan for that area? For that particular property?
Not that I know of.
No.
Okay. Well, then the comment becomes kind of interesting because they're saying, please provide a revised master plan for water and sewer. And so, I'm not sure. I know there's issues up there with, uh, capacity, uh, but the way this thing's written, it kind of indicates to me that there's a master plan already up there in that area for the water and sewer. Is there anybody here can answer that question? No?
Well, we know that it's a limited, uh, capacity, but, uh, we're, we're also doing, we're working on, um, on a water tank and a booster pump to just to provide, uh, enough water for the fire sprinkler and the, uh, the inside, uh, consumption.
What is the size of the water line that you got out there in front of that property or by that property?
The size, I'm sorry?
The size of the water line that you have?
The water, that's a 16-inch water line.
Oh, I'm sorry, a 16?
Yes.
Thank you.
You have a 16 in that part?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
No questions. Is this part of Green Ranch?
No. Green Ranch is a little bit of the.
Green Ranch is the 5,000 acres, not, not the residential area.
No, no, not that I know of.
Huh?
I'm not sure.
No. Green Ranch or Emerald?
No, no. Green. Never mind, it'll, it'll get too complicated.
Yeah, it will. Any other questions? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against?
I abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries, thank you. Next item we have is preliminary consideration of the plat of Santa Elena subdivision Phase 3, intended as residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is HAPO Holdings LTD, engineer is Porras Nance Engineering. The proposed use is residential, the zoning for this 72-lot development is AG. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plot. Comments from planning. Water and utilities. Traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Wayne Nance, Order Center.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me get this off. We'd like to clarify a couple of things, I think we've already discussed with planning. Uh, item number one, it mentions that, uh, that Estudia Antes Drive extended, was extended beyond Cuenca, still does. Uh, what we did is we did just a little change in the phasing, but we've agreed to send them a revised master plan after this. And just to clarify, we haven't changed any streets at all in this, uh, in this master plan. Uh, the second that I would like to clarify, uh, I think I just need to, is water and utilities, item number two. It says the original sewer and master plan provided was not approved by the Utilities Department. That's not correct, we've already got a Phase 1 through this, so obviously there was a water and sewer master plan approved as part of the one-stop-shop process. Uh, but we're gonna work with them in the one-stop, we, we have to, we have to work with the Utilities Department, but that's just too strong of a statement for me to agree to. I'd like to clarify to the board that we are working with an approved water and sewer master plan. And then the last thing that, uh, I'd like to bring up and possibly have, now, I would probably like to stricken, is traffic safety, item number 1. is traffic safety item number one. Although there's some soft language in here that, that I appreciate, like saying should, uh, Rosendo Asara, uh, Encida should connect to, that, excuse me. Uh, becoming a significant intersection, always stop, meandering traffic, blah, blah, blah. And saying that we need to change the, uh, street layout here, suggesting that we need to change this master plan, I disagree with that. We have an approved master plan here, we're not changing this master plan. It came with an approved TIA that was approved by Techstock and the C. And then now, just as we present a plat out of this, and with the same layout and everything, some, you know, suddenly, traffic department saying, hey, extend this, this, uh, road. Uh, no, uh, there's good reasons why we didn't do that. And so we would like that one stricken. If I need to go into greater detail, I will, but I think that's sufficient, uh, a cause to, to, to have that, uh, statement removed. So with those clarifications and that striking, uh, all the rest of the comments we agree with.
Okay, so let me see if I got your text correctly. You want, on the traffic safety comment number one stricken?
Please.
Under utilities, the item number three on the master plan, I'm sorry.
Number two.
Number two. I'm sorry, number two. What is that, that you would like on that comment?
I, I just wanted on the record that, that is not correct, that is an incorrect statement, that we did have an approved water and sewer master plan. All I'm asking is for the record to reflect in your meeting minutes that, uh, that is incorrect. Uh, there was an approved water and sewer master plan. And my proof of it is the fact that we got phase one through. So obvious, they wouldn't have allowed that unless we presented a, an approved water and sewer master plan. I believe that, you know, these comments were probably pushed, pushed out quickly. And, uh, that's just a little too strong.
Okay, now the second part of that, the lift station needs to be relocated as requested?
Uh, we're gonna work with it, on item three, well, of course, we'll work with the utilities department as we move forward in the one-stop shop to identify where they want the lift station.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any questions?
And then the last one was the traffic safety one. So, I'm just looking, that's this, and then the traffic safety one, he wanted to.
That's already addressed that one, that was the very first one.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I mean, like you said, it's got an approved master plan. To go back and tell him now.
I just want, where is it here?
I'm sorry?
So I'm looking for the crosshair, see?
What you, can you put the plat back up and then have Wayne point it out to the commission?
I have the master plan, we, we're not even presenting the master plan, and that's why this comment doesn't belong here, but if we can turn this on.
Yeah, put it on, please.
There it is.
There you go.
Uh, what, what this comment is talking about is that they want this street punched through to here.
Oh.
Yeah, they, they wanna just completely change the master plan. Uh, and I won't even get into other details, it's just, there's a lot of reasons why we wouldn't wanna do that. But it doesn't matter, this is, the, this went through all the channels, very recently.
Exactly.
Okay?
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I was just trying to find what that traffic was, what that comment was addressing, but that's it?
Yeah, it, it was just saying, extend that street.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just have a concern. When you have all the comments that are listed on these pages, and the applicant comes up and challenges what's on there, how do we know that the point that was made is accurate or inaccurate? Because we have only one person presenting, and you don't have the other party, so there's nobody here from traffic. There's nobody here from water. So, whether the plan was approved or not approved, uh, we're listening to one person present, but we're not listening to the other.
That, each department has, has, is invited to come to these meetings, we don't, they know the meetings are here, they can, they can show up and they can defend their, their, their points at any time, as you all know, uh, traffic has been here before. Uh, but they're all welcome to come and defend their positions, and if they're not here, well, I mean, you know, they're,
Then we can.
They don't, they don't call us and give us their interpretation of these comments.
So we can openly reject them at will.
You are the commission.
Whether or without information.
That's correct, you're the commission.
I think, uh, based on what Commissioner Alavina's saying, I would recommend to you as a planning director to talk to the city manager to ensure. And we do have representatives from the utilities department here and the traffic department. These are very important developments going forth. And, you know, uh, Commissioner Alavina is absolutely correct. The engineer knows what he's doing, but I don't know on the other side, that's why we're trying to, it would be very helpful to this commission if we had the other parties on here to answer the questions also.
I would definitely make that comment.
And, and I would recommend strongly that you talk to the city manager about making sure that we have representatives from all the different departments. Do we have anybody here from engineering? No. So it's like, I, I, if somebody doesn't think that this is very important, and I disagree, I think it's very important for the appropriate departments to be here to ask, to answer questions of the commission members. So that is my recommendation, that you take to the city manager.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure this whole commission would support that particular recommendation.
All right, so. Mr. Chairman, just make a comment real quick, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Mr. Navarro, we want him to be here. Isn't that if they have an option? We want him to be here, and if they can't be here, then someone is gonna have to go get him. Because this is very important. We cannot have the engineer hold on. We cannot call him. But also, we need to have him here. Just as all the engineers may time to be here, and I appreciate that. When one of the engineers doesn't show up, we always say, why didn't they show up? So now, Mr. Chairman, you're correct. They have to show up, it's not an option, they have to come here and help us.
Yeah.
Because they're the experts. That was my comment, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
All right, striking out.
Striking out those two items due to lack of information.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is a preliminary consideration of the replat of Southern Development Industrial Park Unit One and, Unit One, and twenty point seven one acres of an unplanted track into Southern Development Unit One. Midtown Commercial Plaza, the tenant is commercial?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is A R Sanchez Junior. Engineer is Crane Engineering. Proposed use is commercial. The zoning for this three lot development is M one. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The plat and the proposed replat. Comments from planning. Water and utilities. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, happy new year to all of you and commissioners. For the record, my name is Edward Gutsa, I'm the principal engineer with Crane Engineering here on behalf of A R Sanchez Junior. Uh, our proposed plan here tonight is a preliminary plat submission, uh, for your review and approval. Our goal here is to eliminate the industrial park existing development that's there currently and convert it into a mixed-use commercial development over, over, over time. Uh, the existing plat was platted in nineteen ninety-three as Southern Development. Uh, it's, there's a public road right away known as Oil Pats Drive. It's a seventy-foot right away, uh, it's already improved. It's been in the city, uh, uh, street system for, since nineteen ninety-three. The east side of it is unplatted land, although it has, uh, some non-conforming uses of warehousing. Our plan here is to, um, plat the entire acreage, it's, uh, roughly forty-four acres, and basically replat it and, uh, and convert it into a more, uh, commercial development to kind of follow the trends of land development in this area. Um, there are some comments on, that are being provided that I'd like to, I'd like to discuss with the commission to either modify or eliminate, um, primarily, uh, there's one comment on planning, I've already discussed this with our, our city planner. Comment number two basically talks about providing a plat note to restrict the direct access to Highway three fifty-nine. We currently have a, a meeting scheduled next week with the, with the Techstock area engineer to discuss this project in which we expect there to be a requirement to develop a TIA. And through a TIA, we can warrant, uh, future driveways and connections of that point through study. We are proposing, uh, the dedication of another right-of-way called Crusado Drive, which will be a sixty-foot right-of-way. And as it approaches three fifty-nine, it'll grow into a seventy-foot right-of-way to mirror what Oil Patch is. And we, and so that is part of the, uh, original master plan, which we currently have on file with the city. But, uh, we, we would like to, uh, uh, request that that comment be modified to allow, uh, the, the, the ability for Techstock to allow any driveway connection that could be warranted by study, not that it will be. Uh, we, we, we're aware of the, of the situation along three fifty-nine with regard to level of service. And what we're really looking for in terms of some of the land uses along the frontage is just a right-out exit at one location east of Crusado to, to, to accommodate some potential land uses that we're working on. And so, we, we wanna just allow, if we could just modify that comment, uh, we're not, uh, we're not disagreeing with it, we're just asking for the ability for Techstock to be a party of it, and so, I sent an email earlier this afternoon to our city planner asking him if we could say, instead of that comment, provide note, provide plat note restricting access to S H three fifty-nine, subject to coordination with Techstock on warranting additional driveways. And we'd like to ask for that to be put into the record.
Okay. Substituting that for number two.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And then, uh, regarding water and sewer and utilities, I just, uh, comment number three, uh, we do have a master plan on file with the city. We already have twelve-inch water lines in our master plan for the water and wastewater proposed in that area. There's an existing eight-inch water line along Oil Patch, which we intend to eliminate and abandon completely. And we will be installing two twelve-inch water lines, one along Oil Patch and one along Crusado, which will both tie into the sixteen-inch that's on Highway three fifty-nine. This is already part of our approved master plan with the city utility department. Uh, and when we analyze this, these water and sewer needs, it was based on the future use that we're discussing tonight. Uh, item number seven, we would like to ask for this item under the water and utility to be removed as this property is already in the city limits. So the annexation of the property is not necessary, it was annexed in nineteen ninety-three. And we have the ordinance available if you want to see that. And then with regard to traffic safety, uh, uh, comment number two is fine, uh, we did provide a master plan with our submittal for this plat tonight to the planning department, and I know that perhaps in the course of the holiday period, perhaps not everybody was able to see all the information. But we do have a master plan proposed, and we're still working on that master plan conceptually. And we intend, as we, as we work on the master plan for this land, we intend to work very closely with the city and with Techstock to really develop this formally and really upgrade the site location, uh, in general. So, uh, we're okay with these comments regarding traffic safety, but I just wanted to, uh, the record that these, this information was provided, and as we understand that we had to provide as we develop plaits with regard, and that include commercial. So with that, uh, I just want to ask that we remove, uh, comment number seven under water and sewer and modify planning comment number two. And so with that, I'll entertain any questions.
I have one question for you, uh, twenty acres that you wanna add to this. I take it that's vacant property?
No, uh, actually.
It's developed property.
It's, it's existing warehousing.
Okay.
That's not platted.
Okay.
It has utilities and it has septic. So all that's gonna be eliminated as we plat and develop new, a new land use plan here, all this will be removed. We are going to demo each of the warehouses, uh, independently and remove all the warehousing in that area.
Okay. So you're gonna remove warehousing in that area and just the proposed use would then be what?
Commercial. We have commercial proposed in our master plan, we're also considering some, uh, along the frontage, uh, I provided a, a master plan for, so we have like a mixed use, if, if you could, if you wanna bring this up here for us, uh, so basically along the, the highway frontage, we're looking at providing some restaurant pad sites, some, uh, small commercial, uh, commercial shell buildings and along the front. Behind the commercial buildings, we're looking at a storage unit complex for about seven acres. And on either side of the storage units, on the east side, we have a multifamily unit along with a, a daycare site. And then on the west side, we have a commercial development to respect the gas easement that we have to work with. Uh, and, and there, we're looking at potential tenants and, and try to bring in an anchor to that location.
Okay.
To the south of that, we have some, we're actually, I have on this plan some potential additional single-family that we're not really sure we're gonna do that yet because of all the plaits and developments occurring in this part of the city. But we've already completed the Southern Development to the South, units two, three, and four are completely, uh, uh, sold out. And so the developer is considering some additional single-family, we haven't made that decision yet, but if we do, we will come back to this commission with a modified preliminary plat and a zone change request at that time.
Okay. That, that was, yeah, when I saw that single-family, that's, that's kinda like why I asked you the question.
Yeah.
I mean, and it kinda makes sense, cause it abuts residential.
Yes, sir. And the reason why we discussed that internally with the developers that this is a forty-four acre tract, and we're tru, we're not convinced that this area can handle forty-four acres commercial.
Yeah.
So with that being said, we said, well, maybe we can bring in some more single-family.
Yeah.
It's already located to the proximity of three fifty-nine, closer to other, and then we can support all that single-family to the south and east and west with a commercial development.
Yeah.
To provide those services, you know, to those people, and kinda following, kinda follows a Viva Comprehensive Plan way of thinking.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense. Anybody else have any questions on the commission for Mr. Gutsa? Thank you, Mr. Gutsa, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Modifying, um, finding comment number two. Was it traffic com, finding?
Yeah.
Comment number two, and then striking. Change your screen. Oh, my God, I have to say. Those numbers, shit. And striking, uh, traffic, uh, striking comment number seven and water's utilities.
Yeah, I did, but I, I. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Yeah, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is the preliminary consideration of the plat of, uh, Vista del Sur subdivision phase two, the intended residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the, uh, record, applicant is H F K Development LLC. Engineer is Porres Nans Engineering. Proposed use is residential, and the zoning for the sixty-one lot development is R one. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Water and utilities, traffic safety, parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Nance, Porters Engineering again. Um, we agree with all of these comments. And, uh, but going back to traffic safety, um, I understand the situation, there's not, not another side for you. So we would like to just, uh, for the record, put on item number two that, uh, we, we will, uh, make sure that the site distance is, uh, what we comply with for the one hundred feet. They, they always ask for one hundred feet, sometimes it's just not capable. We're gonna work with him in the, uh, one-stop shop to accommodate this. Once again, just for the record, uh, I'd like to noted that, uh, it'll be based on site distance, as the former traffic director used to insist on here at these meetings. That's all, we, we, but for the record, we comply with.
All right.
Agree with all the comments.
I have one question for you. How are you gonna access this property? I did see the condition there.
There's already access through Dolly Richter. To Bianca. It's now Dolly Richter.
To Bianca, okay.
There, there's a subdivision that's being built right now, and that will be the.
Your connection to get in.
That will be the connection.
Yeah, because what I saw here, I'm looking at him going, well, I didn't see anything on the plat that shows me how you're gonna get in.
You didn't see the helopad?
Hmm.
No. No, it, the aerial doesn't show that there's a subdivision under.
Subdivision for millionaires, huh?
No, there, there's a way in, and then that curve to the left is actually a Texas that will be extended to beat the Mangana.
Okay. All right. Any, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Nats? All right, and that, what are the wishes to the commission?
Move to accept the preliminary plat.
Subject to the conditions brought up by Mr. Nats.
All right, we have a motion. And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is preliminary consideration of the Guba Green Industrial Plat, the intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Richard Kwan, engineer is Guerra Engineering. Proposed use is industrial and the zoning for this 2-law development is M1 and B3. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. Water and utilities, traffic safety. And the proposed motion. Can you put the overhead view, please? That one.
Okay, Mr. Guerra.
Mr. Chairman, Fred Guerra.
Entrance.
Guerra, you know. Yeah, well, we agree with the comments, you accept comment number, number four on the, provide a shared access. And we feel that it's, it's, it's a large enough tract, there's enough separation between the driveways. And we'll see why we would have to have a shared access.
I guess the question that comes to my mind is, you abut Mueller Boulevard, right?
Correct, yeah.
And Mueller Boulevard, if I remember correctly, is a private street.
Well, it's, it's a, it's from, from the, from that, the guard, the, the guard beyond.
So this section that we're here at is, is not private?
Correct.
It's a public street?
Correct.
Remember, do you?
They, 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 where is the gate, gate?
A little bit further back from this development, is that right, Fred?
Yeah. Yeah, when they built the school, we moved, they gave from the entrance and made public
Yeah.
The portion that reached the school.
To get to the school, all right. So that's a, that's a public street then, okay. All right. Okay, anything else that you...
Just, I'll be.
All right?
Just the, the reason for the shared comment. The, the front, it's closest to, to Mines Road, that little triangle there, that's a, a B3 zone. And then after that, that white, I guess you call it, over is the M1 area. So it's very tight at the entrance to put a driveway, that's why we're asking for a shared, oh wow. Did you understand what I'm saying, Fred?
Yes.
Well, yeah, but, but we feel as far as separation of, for the driveways, there's, there's enough room.
But, for the B3 is the, the concern. So if we push it over, yeah, we're okay with that.
You've got two different, you've got two different zonings right there, you've got a B3 and an M1.
That's correct.
And an M1, you're talking about tractor trailers. And those driveways have to be a little bit bigger than the norm. So I don't know about that shared access, I don't know how the commission feels about that, but...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think that, that that particular item could be removed and he still has to comply on the permitting, so.
Yeah.
There's no option.
Yeah.
So, if, I, I'm ready to make a motion, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve and strike comment number four from planning.
All right, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of a Refugio subdivision, intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Potemo Rodriguez. Engineer is Top Site Civil Engineering, proposed use is residential. The zoning for this 4-law development is R1. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Water and utilities. Leisure. The proposed motion.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners, Manuel Escamilla with Top Site. We concur with all of the comments except for, for just a couple. Well, more than a couple, all of the utility comments. I think this, we, we plan to use a septic on these, on these lots, so all of these comments relate to our collection system.
Let me ask you a quick question right there.
Are you inside the city limits?
Yes, sir.
You're inside the city limits?
And you're, you're, how far away are you from the sewer line? Because the ordinance calls that if you're within 200 feet, you got to extend it. Unless they change the ordinance.
No, it's a state law.
So, yeah, I mean, you need to hook up.
Well, since we're over an acre, it's allowable.
It's what?
Over an acre, the lots are over an acre. So we have acreage lots.
I, I don't think the state law allows you to...
For the size, he's...
Hey?
For the size, he's correct. One acre tracts, one, one acre plus.
State law allows you to do septic system inside the municipality because it's an acre?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Are you sure? I would, I would think that the ordinance doesn't allow that.
It doesn't.
Can you, can you?
How far is the sewer line from your, from your development?
It's, it's part of it, it's down...
Because it's down on connecting the schools and all that area up there, which is Delmar, right?
There's no connection on the other side of the school. Because we're on the backside of the ninth grade.
Right.
There's, there's the aerial right there.
You're on the backside of the one?
All right, let's see, show me exactly up on the map where you're at.
So we're, we're on the south side of the ninth grade campus.
Okay, that, that vacant tract of land up there, that...
So every, everything that's irrigated right there on the northeast quadrant there where the, the groups are.
Right.
So those are going to be our four lots right there.
Okay. And that street that's right next to those lots is what? Okay, and you're telling me there's no utilities in there?
Uh, the sewer is on the other side.
On the other side?
Of the school. The school is serviced.
Show me on the map more or less where the sewer line is, so that I can, I'm trying to figure it out.
And, can you, yes, zoom out, you can't zoom out.
That's kind of hard.
It's a photo.
That's a photo.
Where, where is the loop here?
Where's the loop? It's del otro lado.
To the left, yes.
And Delmar Boulevard is, is...
How about the, how about the location there?
Ah, es que es tu está.
Pull up Google Maps.
Right there. Does that help you?
Put Google up because if you can't zoom out, just put a Google map on.
Can we do it over there?
Is, is this the property next to that rental party place?
That's exactly correct, Commissioner. Uh, just down east of the loop on Delmar, this would be the last property as you get to Dream Big Boulevard, which is the secondary access to the ninth grade campus. So, east of the church, as far as you can go, you get to the back road that gets to the ninth grade campus, that's where this is.
The Alexander Ninth Grade Campus.
Yes, sir.
But there's, there's septic all the way, I mean, there's sewer all the way up to the school.
On the, the north side, yes, sir.
On the coast side.
Yes, sir, on the coast side. So, so that's why the comment from utilities was coordinating access through the school with UISD to get onto their system to then tie into the city system. So Dream Big doesn't have, this, the sewer is serviced north.
So, so the school has a private sewer system?
No.
Uh, in, internal, their own internal system, yes, sir.
They're not connected to the city either?
Yes, sir, at the right of way, they're connected to the city, yes, to the north. Which would be up in the picture.
Mr. Chairman, do any of the properties on Delmar or the extension of it, which is the old detention road, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there water and sewer on, on Detention Road?
The, the church, I, I think may be the last sewer user, I'm not 100% sure of that. But that is well beyond the, the 300 feet. But the, the housing...
We're in the same situation that we were on the other issue where we're guessing with the applicant on whether legally legal or whatever because of the fact that the departments don't show up with proper comments.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think according to the situation here, we really need to have the utilities department here to verify some of this stuff.
Well, well, I think, independent of how this, the utilities department would want us to, the, the planning department mentions the, the ordinance and code that the city allows it in the comment.
Well, I'm not sure that that's correct, to be honest with you, just because they put it in there.
At least the planning department is here to...
I'm not sure that that comment's correct, I mean, oh. Until I can get verification on where that line is, you know, because right now we're guessing and nobody's been able to verify to me where that sewer is, how far it is, so...
There's no sewer under it.
Go to G?
There's no sewer under it.
Yeah, there's no sewer. I know that, but see, the law says if you're within 200 feet.
Okay, then we're definitely not within 200 feet of the north side of the school.
But see, then again, here's the other issue, we're inside an incorporated city limits, you know, and now we're saying, hey, well, all of a sudden we're in incorporated city limits and it's okay if we use one acre lots with septic systems, which is...
We have, we have a, a little municipality and we don't allow any size properties that are inside the city limits to have a sewer system.
It was my understanding the state law changed to five acre tracts, septic system.
This is the only way he could, he could service this, because how else does he get sewer?
How are they currently getting service?
They're currently using septic systems.
Yeah, currently it's a septic system.
Yes.
And what the county, the county goes and checks or however, how is that set up?
The, the city health department has personnel to check septic systems. Like, this is not a, a new, like, idea that, that this city has septic systems, we have septic systems.
They've had septic systems there since...
Yes, that, that they have septic, they're in the city and the health department has a registered limitation that will check septic systems, there's a permit for septic systems and so on. And the reason the acreage is important is because of, of the drain field, you know, an acre gives you...
We know that, I know that, I mean...
And, and we are much further than...
And, and everybody's sure that the law didn't change to five acres? Because that was under the assumption that that law changed from one acre to five acres.
No, it, we just looked it up, it's, it's...
It's one acre?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And, and the city does not have an ordinance that requires you to connect to a sewer line?
Yes, they do. But this is specific to the size of the lot, okay? If you were to go smaller, that, that's illegal.
The city ordinance references the size?
But in addition to the size...
Does the city ordinance reference the size of the lot?
Does a city reference the size?
The ordinance, the ordinance that the city have, reference the size of the lot.
On the zones?
Yes.
On what? On the zones?
No.
That's what you're asking?
No, no, that's not what he's asking you. He's asking you whether the ordinance, as it's written, has that.
Except that.
And a minimum of one acre lots that you don't have to hook up to a, to a sanitary system, that's the city's. That's what he's asking you.
Yes. Why don't you read that?
This is on the Land Development Code, it's section 24.88.4 Facility Standards. On-site storage facilities, no onsite wastewater disposal or septic tech shall be permitted under any lot or tract which is less than one acre in size or within the 200 feet of a public wastewater collection system.
Or 200 feet.
But we're not within 200 feet.
Not within 200 feet.
Right, that's exactly right, Commissioner. So yes, the acre allows us and the 200 feet separation is, is why that's applicable.
Each, each lot is going to be an acre?
Yes, sir.
If you make this work, it does, if he can't meet it, then he doesn't, he doesn't get it.
And those two homes on the, on the site are currently on the septic system? Yes. Okay. Yes. So this is, they're, they're trying to come into compliance, they want to be able to access the, the new public road that the school district and the Kilums extended. That's the, the, the main motivation for, for this, getting platted, this is them coming into compliance.
Yeah.
So, with that said, the utility comments all make reference to live stations and sewer lines and more issues related to, to collection systems, so. Comments. And then, planning comment number six, should the access easement to the west be intended for primary access for improvements? Uh, Dream Big is going to be the primary access moving forward.
What is the current access, how do the access of property right now?
Through the neighbors, you can kind of see on the west side, they drive next to the baseball field, then to the west and then down, this is all uh, you, this was...
And that's an agreement that they had amongst themselves, like, use an easement?
That's right, this was a, a, you know, family compound.
They're all related, right?
Yeah.
It's all family.
Yeah, it, it, it is, I guess.
I'm going to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion carries, thank you. Next item that we have is preliminary consideration of the plat of Cooper's Landing Subdivision, the intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is HSJ Investments, um, excuse me, yes, HSJ Investments LTD. Engineer is Top Site Civil Group, proposed use is residential. The zoning for this 47-law development is R1. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
All right, yes, sir.
Escamilla again, thank you. Uh, we concur with all the comments except we wanted to talk a little bit about the fire comment. And we spoke with our Captain Vidal earlier today, I don't know if he relayed our, our discussion to you.
No, he didn't let me know of any changes.
Okay, so he probably didn't change his mind, so I didn't do a good job. Uh, I wanted to, can I hit the projector real quick?
Yeah, hit the, the button right there, right over there, there it is.
So, we, we, we are ready and the owners are ready to comply and add a third access to the east. But we wanted to discuss with you all and with Chief Dominguez, the difference between what we're doing here, since Mueller Boulevard is existing, we are adding on lots and two streets to an existing road. But when there are situations that arise, when we need to bring in the collector with these roads or with these lots, then the plat boundary changes and the road accesses actually get further apart into the plat itself. What, the rule that he's discussing is that, in, in his comment, is these access points are too close. We need two access points because of the number of lots and, and we, we, we understand that. But because of the proximity of them, it, they're not far enough apart to meet the code. And the change that happens when we bring in the collector is that the distance changes from these two points to these two points. And these two points meet that distance. And so that's, that's what I wanted to talk with Chief Dominguez and talk to you all. If we had brought, if Mueller Boulevard were not existing and we were building it, then the layout of running a loop with 46 lots complies.
I, I don't see how, how that makes a difference.
Well, the, the difference is since I'm not bringing in Mueller, my two access points on the plat, like, looking at the plat as a standalone permit, I would say, the access points got closer.
Well, actually, all we're considering is this small development you're bringing in, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and when we look at that small development, the code asks you to take the diagonal.
Yes.
When we took the diagonal, I think they had said it was like 886, right?
Yes.
So you need four... So you need four hundred, uh, four hundred and forty feet separation, now we take that separation from the center line of the two roads.
Yes.
When we take the center line that you have, it's only two hundred and seventy feet. So just looking at that one portion you're bringing into us, it doesn't have the, the remoteness.
I, 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 I concur with you, I, 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 I agree with you. The, the change is if this plat were to include the collector.
Well, the thing is.
Because then, that, you look at that one.
Well, basically, but see, where we look at this are from these two access points right here, this is where.
I agree, because my plat only contains those lots, it doesn't, my plat right now does not contain Mueller Memorial. If it did, my two access points are at the ends of Mueller Memorial and that exceeds the four hundred.
How are your two access points here if this is where you enter the property?
I, I, I agree with you.
Basically, when the code's asking you, what it's doing is it's taking how close are these, and what it's trying to take into consideration is should you have a larger event? In this area here, that basically eliminates or neutralizes these two points, you have no other way in there.
I, 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 I agree with you, but when the plat changes, and I, like I said, this is hypothetical. If, if I was plating Mueller Memorial right now. Like if my plat included the collector that feeds this area. The separation turns into these two points, because those are the two access points to the, to the, to the plat, to the subdivision.
I think, you know what, it's cause we're playing with, what is the definition of the access point?
And that's fair, and, and, and other plats have gone forward with the measurement points.
But remember, we're not talking about other parts, I can't tell you what was done in other parts, I can just tell you that when we do our measurements, we. I mean, we could basically play with the, say, well, you know what, we got these roads coming here, these are our access points. But those are not our access points to this particular area.
Right.
It's, like you said, it's semantics, we could.
I think right now.
It, it's subjective.
I think right now, the way I see things, based on the rule. The way they do their measurement, this does not comply. Okay? So we have two options. One, we can go forward and ask for affirmative or denial, or two, you can ask for a, a tabling to go ahead and see if you can work this thing out. It's up to you.
It, it, it's not, it's not a denial, it's whether we, we incorporate fires comments. And, and like I said, we, we already have, look, we, we, we're prepared to, to present. Uh, a revision that shows a third access point. But just so. Uh, up onto the, on the northern side of the, of the property. Now, this is a road to nowhere. And it will probably be a road to nowhere for twenty-plus years.
Is it the same property owner?
No.
So you'd have to get permission from another property owner to?
No. No. It's just gonna get it. Future accesses are allowable because we can't, you know, solve access.
It was my understanding, and this is something we discussed when Kirby was here, he said. When they're coming in and they're planning first, and once they're showing that punch out, once that's recorded. Once the next property comes to plat, now they're forced to continue that punch out, that's, that's the way we've been running with it.
Yeah, and that's, and it, it's true, and we have to do the same thing, we have to, to.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And tie into other developers dead end roads.
Makes sense. And that would be, and that would be your secondary point of access? Your third.
Secondary, it's third.
It would be the, the, the access point that meets code.
Because the second access is too close.
By event, you mean if there's a fire up there in the front, your fire trucks can't come in there, that they're gonna be able to go through.
Hazmat event or something that, that basically puts away all this, you still have this point here.
Coming through the back.
Yes.
But you can really just consider those two one, right?
Yes.
And the code asks for.
Exactly.
And the code asks for two.
One, these would be your two points.
And the code asks for, you need two min, points.
Two that meet a minimal diagonal separation from the longest, you know, the two longest points, the diagonal.
Right.
The, the two, the entrance points have to be half that, minimal.
Yes, and, 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 and we understand this, and, and we wanted to bring this.
Can you put a Google map up? I wanna see the site, I wanna see what's adjacent all around this area.
We're gonna have to do it from that computer there.
And.
That's right.
And I wanna, I wanna mention one thing too, and we, this is one thing that we talked with the fire department. The, the second access is, is triggered by the excess of thirty-two, thirty-two.
Thirty.
Thirty lots, we're at forty-six. So we exceed and we understand that we need two access points. If we were to do two cul-de-sacs with the exact same location. And had.
Under thirty.
Well, under thirty per cul-de-sac, but over thirty for the same two points.
Te la probarían.
Yes. And this is where we sometimes get into little areas like this where, man, it, it, it doesn't seem like it's making a hundred percent sense. It's not adding a ton of safety here. But it is costing the city of Norado tax money forever and maintenance. We're gonna maintain this, the city will maintain this road forever, even though it goes nowhere, so.
Well, but basically, you gotta remember, we have a lot of those areas, that, the code does have an exception that says that. That if you show that punch out for as future, it allows you to move on with the construction, and that's where the code is trying to basically meet them halfway. Cause if they didn't have that exception, nobody would ever be able to finish development. So, so the, the code has given him that exception, now when he says, he doesn't really see, this does provide better safety. Now, what you were talking about, the two cul-de-sacs, technically it meets code, but it's kind of a loophole. So it's not, it's not the ideal.
It's not a loophole.
Well, you know what, would you wanna put two cul-de-sacs?
Well, I, I, I prefer to not put two.
And I'll tell you, and we're very grateful that you're putting the, the third one, because that third one does provide a higher degree of safety.
Where the arrow is, is where the subdivision is.
It helps out.
Right.
It's for the residents that are there, I mean, it, it gives us better access to the property, I think it benefits everyone involved, the public and.
And I think.
Do you want me to zoom in?
I think in twenty years.
No, that's fine, I can see, you know, I mean, I can see where it's going and. It's coming off into Mueller Boulevard.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 yeah.
So would you, would you like to take this discussion? Which is a private road.
No, 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 we're ready to move forward, I just wanted to bring this up because this is, this is substantive, this is one lot converting into a street, so we're losing tax base. And we're increasing maintenance, but.
Let, well, let me ask you that, if you're getting there. So this is a private road from the gate, wherever the gate is, to the inside of the property.
Yes, sir.
So, do you need permission from the owner of the private road to access this development that you're proposing? And then you're gonna make the two roads that are in this proposed development. As the only roads in this entire subdivision that are gonna be maintained by the city?
Fair point, sir.
Huh?
Fair point, no, you're, 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 you're right, fair point.
Are you gonna mess with those things?
Yeah.
Fair point.
Sounds like.
Tax base, then I'll just, I'll just hang my hat on the tax base, how about that? And the homeowners association of La Guata can pick up the tab for the street.
Yeah.
And they have a conflict.
Sounds like an interesting dilemma.
It's a very interesting.
You know, this, this problem and the other problem we had earlier are things that are facing the city at some point in time in its development. Uh, some people are gonna have to sit down at the table and work these things out, cause otherwise, we're gonna start having all these problems. As we start using up all this space that's available.
Who's the owner of the adjacent property, do you know?
As of our records, it could have changed Gar Ram Investments.
Who?
Gar Ram, I don't, I don't.
Gar?
G A R? G A R, Ram, R A M.
Gar? My other question on this. Besides access, is the residential area is now gonna, but the M, what is that, M one right now there, or M two? The, and the ordinance calls for, they didn't call for a burn?
Pency.
Or?
Pency.
They just asked, whenever you bought an M one, you need to put pency in there. All right, anybody else have any questions?
Ready to, ready to move forward and concur with all comments, we just wanted our.
So you wanted, you, your comment, you concur with all the comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're not gonna delete any comments. All right. All right, anybody else have any questions on the commission for Escamia? If not, what are the wishes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. The next item is item of consideration of the following final plats and final replats. I will ask for a motion to take items eight and nine. Motion, we have a second? And a second, all those in favor? All right.
There's a question.
All right, just a minute, we got there, now, yes, sir, before we go ahead and get a motion to approve.
Just a.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but on item eight C. On consideration of the plot of Port Grande subdivision phase two, we submitted a request to the city planning director to table this item, time uncertain.
Then we will. I have to amend his motion. Is that okay with the maker?
I accept the amendment.
There's an amendment and the second, okay, we'll table that item, thank you. All right, now we need a motion to approve.
Tell me.
We have motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, just really quick, I was uncomfortable with some of the decisions we made today based on. Some of the other departments not being here and us scratching and moving and deleting and adding. So, I really wanna stress to the planning director that those folks are here. Also, the ordinance on the one acre, I don't know if we can bring up the, and make a recommendation to council and do an amendment to, to the ordinance, and if we can look in that. A little bit closer, maybe a subcommittee to start looking at that particular item as far as the sewage and allowing it on, within the city limits. So, if we can do that as well, and I know, you know, we can make a recommendation and at least kick it up to council, and if they wanna accept it, they accept it, if not, they don't as far as the ordinance amendment. And then, um, traffic plans, there's been a lot of medians and shared access, and I don't know if we can start asking these engineers to bring in actual plans and counts and. Who's gonna, how it's gonna affect the development in order for us to look at that.
That's kinda hard because you're doing a conceptual plan. And it depends on how you sell it.
Well, we're here to, to analyze and do our best decision on, on these plaques.
And that's, that's all you can do.
And if we could have a plan, especially a traffic plan, especially if we're, we're doing these shared accesses and sometimes adding a median and deleting medians. I really would like for that to happen as well.
Well, I think, we could, we could have a department.
Or have traffic ask for the plan?
That's what I'm saying, I think if we get the department's person here, it would make things a lot easier.
Clear.
All right, we have one item left. Item number ten is consideration of an extension of the following plat and replat, uh, consideration of the extension of the preliminary reconsideration. Of the plat of Esne, the subdivision phase one, the intent is residential. We have a motion for the extension, they want a six-month extension, we have a motion.
Motion.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion and a second, for those in favor?
Aye.
Carries, thank you all, thank you all very much.